So it is seven thirty four P M. It is Tuesday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. This is the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, calling this meeting of the Board to order. Would like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present. Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Kevin Mills.
Here.
Aaron Ford.
Sorry, here.
And Stephen Revellak.
Here.
Wonderful. Good evening to all. On behalf of the town, Rick Valarelli.
Yeah.
And Vincent Lee.
Here.
I don't believe there's anyone else in the town. Waiting on tonight. And persons appearing for eighty-three Palmer Street, Bob Anesey.
Yes, I'm here.
Here, fantastic. And appearing for thirty-four Marathon Street, McGovern's are here. Even names.
There we go. Hi, I'm here.
Oh, wonderful. All right. This open meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty. The order publicly suspends the requirement of an of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during a public hearing. For this meeting, the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom app with online and telephone access as listed on the agenda posted to the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded, and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Other participants are participating by computer, audio, or telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, your screen name, or another identifier. Please take care to not share personal information. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask you to please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the answer for promoting an orderly meeting. And where we are starting a new hearing this evening, I'll just read the town's new land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning Board of Appeals discusses and arbitrays the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as Monotomy in Algonquin when we're meeting with waters. The Board acknowledges that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their name. We pay our respects to the ancestral bull line of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. We will begin the this evening with several administrative items, including the approval of minutes. And actually, we'll not do the approval of minutes, sorry. Approval of decisions and discussion on the board about the future of online meetings. These items relate to the operation of the board, and such will generally be conducted without input from the general public. The board will not take up any new business on prior hearings, nor will there be the introduction of any new information on matters previously brought to the board. After the introduction of each item, I'll invite members to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly. If members wish to engage in discussion with each other, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. So we have item number two on our agenda is the approval of the decision for twelve Christine Road. The decision was written by Mr. Hanlon. It was distributed, and I believe everyone should have had an opportunity to comment on it. Are there any questions? Or further comment? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the draft final decision in for a special permit in twelve Christine Road be approved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Members in favor, Mr. Dupont. Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. Revellak.
Hi.
The Chair votes aye. That decision is final. This brings us up to item number three, the approval of the decision for fifty-three Pine Ridge Road. This is another decision written by Mr. Hanlon. It was distributed to the board for questions and comments, which I believe were received. Are there any further questions or comments in regards to the decision for fifty-three Pine Ridge Road? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the draft final decision in fifty-three Pine Ridge Road be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. May I have a second?
Second. Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Follow the board, Mr. Dupont.
Hi.
Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. Revellak.
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. That decision is final. That brings us up to item number four on our agenda, which is the discussion of post-COVID meeting protocols. So this appears to be a topic that is moving at an extremely fast rate of speed. I had a conversation with the Town Council of Kaim on Friday, where it was looking like those are the notes that are available on the website where sometime between the first and the fifteenth, we have to transition to being back in person. Subsequent to that, yesterday, there are House and Senate bills now in the Massachusetts seeking to extend some of the provisions of the relaxation of the open meeting law that are in effect because of Governor Baker's order from last March. But apparently, they're both attached to the budget bill, so they would probably not get passed until the very end of June, which is, of course, after the the date when we would need to transition. And then just this afternoon, Mr. Hanlon brought to my attention that Governor Baker spoke, and he himself is introducing another bill, which would actually extend, it appears it would extend all of the provisions possibly until September. Whether this is specifically to give towns and cities an opportunity to come up with new policies, or whether this is just related to pre-existing summer vacation plans that necessitated the the change. We don't know, but it appears that the there will be action in the state, hopefully, taken before the first of June to extend the the current provisions we're operating under. So that will give us and give the town an opportunity to figure out how we can move forward in a hybrid fashion. At town meeting earlier this month, there was a a study committee set up by the town in order to investigate how best to implement this transition. But it looks unfortunately like we are going to have to implement this transition far ahead of when that committee gets a chance to to really get going. So that's more sort of an update on where things stand with this other. Any any questions or comments from the the board in regards to this?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I just wanted to point out that at least the news stories around the governor's announcement suggested that a part of the purpose of the of the announcement was to provide the legislature with an opportunity to study and to move forward on some more permanent resolution, just just as in many areas of life. Some of what we've done during the pandemic, we intend to continue to do. There's that sense in the legislature. There's some of that going on as well, and we're coming up against a deadline right now. So part of the idea is is not so much to give the legislators a vacation over the summer, but to give them time to get their job done.
Excellent. You have Revellak, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Revellak. So it although under, you know, the current emergency order, we basically have a window of between June first and June fifteenth to can, you know, to give thought to meeting again in person. I would be inclined to err on the later side if for no other reason than, you know, I won't get my second vaccination until early June. Yeah, so if for as much as I miss seeing everybody in person, I am personally not in a rush to 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 give up virtual meetings just yet.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll go ahead and close this topic for now. I'm sure we'll get additional additional information. We'll probably be rolling in very soon from this data to exactly what whether Governor Baker's action is approved. And we're moving forward in that direction, so I guess more details coming. So this brings us up to the public hearings for this evening. Now turning to public hearings on tonight's agenda, here are some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves, make their presentation to the board. I'll then request that members of the board ask for questions they have on the proposal. After the board's questions have been answered, I'll open the meeting for public comment. So the next item on our agenda is item number five, docket three, six, five, eight, eighty-three Palmer Street. And appearing on behalf of the applicant is Mr. Robert Anesey. If you go ahead and introduce yourself and explain to us what what you are looking to do.
Yes, this is Robert Anesey appearing for the applicants. And I have a rather unique situation for me, at least. I've never encountered this kind of a an appeal before. And I think Mr. Hanlon, Mr. Dupont may understand the concept that I would talk about in terms of it's almost like a complaint for declaratory relief. What I'm asking the board to do is not to look at the situation presently as far as zoning is concerned. What I'm asking the board to to do is go way back to nineteen fifty-five, okay? When the this particular decision was written by the zoning Board of Appeal. When it was written in nineteen fifty-five, essentially, what the board did is the board allowed an assemblage of a three lots, basically into two lots. And the two lots wound up being subdivided into one containing four thousand five hundred and eighty-two square feet that had a a single family home on it. The other lot containing five thousand five hundred and four square feet did not have a home on it. The I'm given to understand of any kind. The what the board did is the board basically rendered a decision at the time and said that the you could have the subdivision, that you could have a single family house or a house, I shouldn't say single family, because it didn't say that at all, that you could have a house on the lot containing four thousand five eighty-two and a house on the lot containing five thousand five oh four. So we have to go back to nineteen fifty-five and try to view what the neighborhood looked like in nineteen fifty-five. And one of the ways that you can do that is by looking at the block plan that might have existed then and other matters as well. But if you look at the block plan and even look at the block plan today, I think what you'll see is that the lot containing five thousand five hundred and four square feet was one of the larger lots in the neighborhood. All of the lots I'm given to understand on the other side of Palmer Street, on the other side of eighty-three Palmer Street, were two family buildings, two family lots. As I look at the block plan, I see two numbers, and the two numbers indicate to me that they were two family dwellings. Now, the so the board certainly had that in mind. And again, I'm asking the board to do something that's unusual here. I'm I'm going to be requesting that the board go back in time to nineteen fifty-five. If the board believes it has the authority to do so for the purpose of interpreting what the zoning board meant when they subdivided that property into two lots. Why? Because the the then zoning board didn't indicate that the lots were to be for one family homes or two family homes. Now, my argument as counsel for the applicant is that the neighborhood even then consisted largely of two family homes. And the board and the collective members of the board must have been aware of that fact back in nineteen fifty-five. And my position for the applicant would be if the board meant to limit the lot containing five thousand five oh square feet, or either of the lots for that matter, to a single family lot, then they would have said that in the decision. The problem is, the decision is devoid of any of the matters that ordinarily would be contained in a zoning decision. There are no findings of facts with respect to how they concluded, whatever they concluded. And so there's nothing that we can look at for that to that effect. However, the other argument I make is notwithstanding that fact, the board did come to a decision in nineteen fifty-five. And when they came to that decision, again, they knew the neighborhood was largely two family. They didn't say that the subdivision limited construction of the homes to a single family. And if they wanted to say that, they could have said that, but they never did. So my argument is that we all know that there's a twenty-day appeal period with respect to any defect in a zoning decision. Okay? And you can make an argument here reasonably that there was a defect in the zoning decision. Why? Because they didn't make the findings of fact that they should have made with under chapter forty-eight, even as of that point in time. But my position is that where they didn't do what they were supposed to do, and they didn't certainly say that the subdivision was limited to one family homes, and the twenty-day appeal period expired, that the they meant, okay? Whether they meant it or not, but as far as I'm concerned, my position would be that the bottom line is that it it was a two-family lot, okay? Not a single-family lot. Now, I'm not asking that the board look to present zoning. If you had if you had to look to present zoning, we don't have enough square feet on the lot to satisfy the six thousand square foot requirement. Okay, so I'm not asking that the board do that. In addition, if we had to look to present zoning, I think there'd probably be a question of a large addition as well, because the if you I had the architect fill out the dimensional information, even though it would not be relevant to my argument, because my argument isn't whether it complies with present zoning. My argument is what was the intent on the part of the members of the zoning board back in nineteen fifty-five? And I'm suggesting to the board that I filed an application for both a special permit and a variance, because I didn't know what else to do in terms of getting the matter before the zoning Board of Appeal. So I'm asking that the board step in at that point and help the the client out in terms of where we are and perhaps interpret that decision from nineteen fifty-five and interpret it so that, in fact, the subdivision resulted in what be becoming a two-family lot, even though a single-family house was constructed on it after the zoning decision.
Thank you, Mr. Anesey. So just to clarify, has the building department stated that this is not a two-family lot?
The I spoke with the building department, and Rick Valarelli would know this as well. And I was told that the matter should be determined by the zoning Board of Appeal. And that's the reason why it was chucked up to the zoning Board of Appeal. And that's what happens in these situations where there are gray matters, and the building department perhaps doesn't feel that they have the ability at their level to make a determination. So it gets chucked up to you folks. That's what happened.
Where in between nineteen fifty-five and today, the town has on several occasions voted to adopt an updated zoning map in which this parcel is identified as a being within a two-family district. So you're saying, notwithstanding those votes, there is still a question as to whether this lot is allowed to have.
It's a two-family. It's a two-family. What I'm saying is that it's a two-family, but that the subdivision allowed a two-family building to be constructed on the lot in nineteen fifty-five. Because I can't comply with the current lock area requirement for constructing a two-family on this lot. I don't have six thousand square feet. I don't have that. So if I had to comply with present zoning, that's a problem for me. I'd have to get relief for that with respect to present zone.
Okay, so you're you are looking to amend the nineteen fifty-five decision, not because it specifically precludes the construction of a two-family house, but because by modifying the original decision, you feel it would allow you to construct a two-family house by right?
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm suggesting. That's what I'm I'm suggesting that that was the intent on the part of the members of the zoning board in nineteen fifty-five, because essentially that's pretty much what they said, okay? In their decision in nineteen fifty-five, the proposal was quite in keeping with several other others already submitted to the board, which to paint pertain to lots in the block between Palmer Street and Beacon Street. And the resulting lot lots would be as large or larger than the average lot lots in the vicinity. Yes, you hit it on the head. That's what I'm asking the board to do.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Members of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
When was the house that is currently on the lot built?
Then again, Mr. Han.
When when was the single-family house that is currently on the lot built?
On the lot that was built shortly after the decision. Maybe within a year or so. Hello?
The the assessor's records indicate nineteen fifty-five as the year of construction.
Around the same time, yeah, within the year, yeah.
Was do you have any knowledge as to whether or not any particular plans to build a house were before the board at the time it made its decision in nineteen fifty-five?
I have not seen any. I know that, okay? And I did make in part, but I haven't seen any. If there are, I have not seen.
Is there any evidence that, well, I'm guessing the answer to this must be no, but when when it was actually built, have you seen any of the papers that were submitted to what was then the building inspector to know why it was that it was allowed? Mr. Anesey, I'm losing you. I don't. We can't hear you very well.
Yes, I'm sorry. You cannot hear me?
I can now.
Okay, all right. I do not, okay? I have not seen any plans, okay, when the house was built, okay? My argument, of course, is that it wouldn't make any difference, because even if the house was built as a single family, which it was, okay? My argument still is that you have to look at the zoning decision as it was written, okay? And what the zoning decision said. We're not talking, in my opinion, about what the the then owner of the property did to clarify the intent of the zoning board. We're talking about what the decision said for the purpose of clarifying the intent of the zoning.
No, I do understand that. I'm I'm trying to understand if there's evident any evidence as to what the building inspector thought when he was presented with the plans, but I gather that that is the subject on which we currently have no information. The would it make it? I'm trying. Let me focus in on whether it's two or or one. If you were planning now to raise the existing single-family house and to build another single-family house there, would your argument before us be any different? You still don't have the authority to build. I mean, you still don't have an adequate lot to build a new single-family house. So you seem to me to be more or less in the same fixture and now.
My 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 argument, I think you're right, okay? I think your analysis is correct. Yes.
So the real problem here is building anything on a non-conforming lot. Well, I don't know that it's technically a non-conforming lot, but at least a lot that is too small.
I could agree on that.
Okay. Do you have any understand? I this is the you have no reason to necessarily be up on that. But in this in the last six weeks, this is the second case that we have had in which a long ago Board of Zoning Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeals has approved an odd subdivision of lots that resulted in a a lot that was to that was non-conforming and that therefore and knowing that that's what it was doing. And now we're in the situation of trying to figure out what to do about that. Do you have an understanding? I mean, what this looks like is an application for permission to do a subdivision. And today, of course, as far as I know, the board has does not have that authority at all. So it's not something that that we see in our normal business. But I have the sense that the board in those days had may have had powers that it was acting under that are not the power to issue a special permit or the power to issue a variance, but something else. And I'm wondering if if you have the knowledge to teach us as to what what authority the board was actually exercising here and what it what and what the rules were, what the what the statute is, whatever. I mean, authorities don't come from just nowhere. So where does this authority come from?
I I certainly go back to I did not begin to practice law in the town until nineteen sixty-seven or sixty-eight. But certainly, going back to then, I can attest to the fact that the zoning board did, in fact, allow subdivisions. And they were doing so, in my view, under the provisions of chapter forty-eight. Now, if you're to ask me whether there is any particular town bylaw that they were relying on, I don't I don't know that to be the case. But I think the catch-all and the umbrella for what the zoning board did in the early days was again hanging their hat on chapter forty-eight.
This is this is the last time I'll I'll lead you to others, but when one of the things that is true in both of the decisions that we've recently read in which a nineteen sixties or nineteen fifties opinion, they 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 do not seem to have regarded. I mean, you would have thought that doing a subdivision that resulted in non-conforming lots would have been something they would be if not think of themselves as prohibited from doing, at least would be be strongly contrary to their doing it. And in both of these cases, the board really essentially said, we think it makes good sense to do this, and it's in the interest of all the parties and so forth. And so we're doing it because it makes good sense. And I'm trying to get a sense of what sense that makes when you have a law that says that this is such and such is a is a minimum. And I wonder if if you can inform us as to what their thinking was back then.
I think that in many instances, Mr. Hanlon, the board did take action based upon what made good sense in those days. We had some pretty illustrious figures on the zoning board, going back to the sixties and the seventies. We had as a chairman, Bob Muldoon, who was essentially the head of the Real Estate the Association for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a very well-known real estate attorney. We had Dick Keshen, a very well-known real estate attorney as well. And I think that you're probably looking at it correctly, that in many instances, things were done, okay? Again, under the umbrella. Again, under the umbrella of we'll cite Chapter 48 and say we're doing it under 48. But it was done because they thought it was the correct thing to do with respect to the facts before them at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Nesi.
Thank you. Mr. Revellak?
This is, you know, a question of sort of looking at this from a different angle. But this lot has more than 50 feet of frontage and an area of more than 5,000 square feet. And if I my understanding is correct, Chapter 48, Section 6 would allow the the construction of a single or two family dwelling on such a lot, provided the zoning board of appeals made a finding that the, you know, the new building was not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Is 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 that correct? This is a question for any of the attorneys.
That is, I think that is the law. I think you're right about that.
Um, I mean, would it be? So what I'm what I'm kind of thinking or my line of thinking is we the our zoning board of appeals made a decision back in 1955. And they really haven't provided much insight as to what, you know, their mindset was and what the rationale for making that decision was. In the absence of that decision ever having been made, I think what we would be looking at today would be, you know, essentially an application of the vested rights provisions in Chapter 48, Section 6. And I'm just curious or looking for thoughts on whether that might be a more appropriate way to proceed or or an appropriate way to proceed.
One of the again, I filed for both a special permit and a variance. So I think both are before you, and I quite frankly was looking for guidance from the zoning board of appeal. That's why I did that.
Thank you, Mr. Nesi.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
Mr. Nessie. Hello, I as always, I am. You know, I appreciate the arguments that you're making and understand how you're getting to the point you have arrived at. I guess the thing that is a bit of a challenge for me is that we we're looking again, as Mr. Hanlon referenced, to a zoning board which was acting in another capacity, perhaps, and I think maybe as a planning board. On the one hand, because they seem to have approved a subdivision plan. On the other hand, they've cast it in terms of a special permit, which sort of brings it back to the regular type of work that the the zoning board does. And my initial question, when I was reading your statement of facts, was were these two lots when they were combined and then separated out into new sizes of conforming in terms of area and frontage? But then I believe that in your argument, when you've highlighted it, which I appreciate, you said that the zoning decision, it says that the subdivision would create two lots with with less than the square foot area required by the zoning bylaw. So do I understand that correctly that they?
And that's what the zoning decision said as well. Yes.
So that's always the challenge for me is on the one hand, if they make a decision, and I I think, as you've indicated, back then, at times, they were trying to make what they thought were common sense decisions, given the facts on the ground. And at the same time, and and oftentimes they'll just do that without any sort of comment. But here, they're actually acknowledging the fact that they're creating either one or two nonconforming lots. And so that's that's a part of it that I have to really consider carefully because as we go along, if more and more lots appear on the horizon where there have been these decisions which were acknowledged to have been inconsistent with the provisions of the zoning bylaw at the time, I I'm fearful that that sets a precedent. And I I wonder, Mr. Chairman, if I know that the planning department is not going to comment on something along these lines, but I'm wondering whether Town Council would be able to give us some guidance, because I do think it's a rather complicated question legally. So those are my concerns, or at least the the facts that seem to come up for me to consider. And I'm again thinking Town Council might give us some help in in sort of figuring out how to weigh those.
Mr. Chairman.
Nesi.
This is Pat. No, actually, it was me. I just wanted to. I certainly think that's true. I think that this is not a one off situation as we've come to realize. And the decision here itself says that the proposal is quite in keeping with several others already submitted to the board, which pertained to lots in the blocks between Palmer Street and Beacon Street, which suggests to me that the board was already well acquainted with this situation and heads. And there are another of other opinions that may be similar to this one out there. And so I I think that we have to imagine that whatever it is that we decide ultimately, in this case, is something that may affect a number of other cases as as well. And we need to be thinking sort of in in that vein, that will be laying down a rule of some sort. And we need to be quite careful and considering as a matter of law, just what that that rule ought to be.
Were there questions for the board? None at the moment. I'll now open the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments will only be taken as they relate to the matter at hand to be directed to the board for the purpose of informing your decision. Members of public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. The chair asked that those wishing to address the board a second time during any particular hearing to complete the patient and allow those wishing to speak for the first time to go ahead of them. Members of public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participant tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. To be called upon by the meeting host, you'll be asked to give your name and address, and you'll be given time. Your questions and comments, all questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. Once all public questions and comments happen addressed for the time allocated by the chair has ended, the public comment period will be closed. The board and staff will do our best to show.
Are you gonna ask a question?
So at this time, if you'd like to speak, please go ahead and in the participants tab, raise your hand. Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I would hope that when either making a decision or referring it to Town Council or you know, when establishing a precedent, I know you're trying to walk carefully here because I think as as your members have clearly pointed out, this is going to come up probably with increasing frequency. I would hope that either yourselves or whoever makes the decision here would take into account not only the written decision of the zoning board of appeals in 1955, but also what occurred in this case, the same year with the property. A single family home got built. And it was built on, I guess, not quite a conforming lot, because my understanding of this is not that clear. And in making the decision of what to do now, I think you need to consider not only what a decision of the previous board was, in this case, many 50, 60 years ago, but also what's been done since. And I mean, had, for instance, two homes been built on two nonconforming lots, you'd be stuck with, you know, sort of the situation as as built at that time. You're now stuck with a situation of one house, one single family home on what is maybe a nonconforming lot, and you have to proceed from that fact, not from the fact that two houses were built on two nonconforming lots at the time. Now, forgive me if if my lack of understanding of the situation clearly points out that what I just said is ignorant. I'm not sure I completely understand what's going on here. But I think I think the facts on the ground now and the fact that zoning is different now and the zoning rules are different now. It doesn't get doesn't get all undone by the fact that in 1955, a certain decision was made based on the facts that were true at that time. Zoning and zoning in my in my perspective evolves. And what matters now is different than perhaps what mattered then. And just because a decision was made then based on the mores or points of fact at that time doesn't tie our hands in the fact that we expect now to follow the rules of zoning that have been established since and currently on effect. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate that. Mr. Heckley? If you can go ahead and unmute yourself and name an address to the record, please.
Sorry, I thought I had unmuted myself and it must have clicked again. My apologies. So my name is Philippe Heckley. I live on Palmer Street. And I I live in a two family. It is it is a two family. There are some section of our streets that are zoned for two family, and it's lovely. My concern is not about whether or not the there should be some kind of I can't find the word, sorry. My concern is not about whether or not to allow two family. My concern is that the particular builder who seems to have drawn the plans has has done a lot of houses one street over on Beacon Street. And I guess there was enough footage on on that street to allow for this. But I feel like as a that the particular type of construction that was put by that particular builder is not enticing a very close knit community because it creates a different type of relationship. And I think it it brings more divisions and it does bring communion. And in our particular block, we're very proud of being able to have block parties and a sense of communion, and we miss that since COVID-19. And we're concerned that the the particular type of driveway that the builder seems to be promoting is going to be detrimental to the the particular social tissues that we have at the moment. That's my concern.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the list is Mrs. Susan Brow. Name and address to the record, please.
Hi, this is Andy Hazelton. I live at 99 Warren Street with Susan Brow, who's sitting next to me. But I guess reinforcing what Philippe said, I I don't think that we would necessarily be opposed at all to a two family being built on the neighbor's lot, as long as it were in keeping with the character of the neighborhood or the street, I should say, in particular. And I don't think that the proposed design is simply put at all. And I would I would refer you to the excellent December 2020 Residential Design Guidelines for Arlington, which explicitly are at variance with the proposed design, specifically with regard to the recommendation against parking that dominates the principal facade on page 43. And also even more particularly with regard to the principle A1 that new development should be designed based on the relevant neighborhood block category and local streetscape pattern, which is defined on page 16 as two family town core. One of the primary characteristics is side yard driveways. So it seems to me that if Arlington takes its new and extremely excellent residential design guidelines seriously, that it would frown on the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Anything further? Thank you very much. Mr. Seltzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don Seltzer, Irving Street. And I have a question for the board. I don't think I heard it said this evening. Back in 1955, what was the minimum buildable lot size? Do we know?
That's a very good question. We know that both of the lots that were established were not conforming. But I have been unable to get my hands on a copy of the older zoning bylaws. Rick, do you know by any chance?
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, we're trying to locate a 1955 zoning bylaw, which is a long shot. But I contest almost to 100% certainty that the lot size back in 1955 was 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet and probably a lot less, having grown up in a development in Arlington. When I was a youngster back in the 50s, that lot in a new development was 40 feet of frontage and 4,000 square feet. So I can I can say with probably 99.9% certainty that 1955, the lot size was 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet, probably less.
Mr. Chairman. Please, Mr. Hanlon.
I'm willing to bet for that other 1%. Because the opinion of the board flatly says, at least as I read it, that 5,500 was not adequate. And if that's true, then 5,000 couldn't be the minimum that existed at that time. And assuming that whatever law established the minimum lot size dealt in even numbers, I'm willing to bet that the even number at issue was probably 600, 6,000 square feet.
Yeah, I mean. Just.
I just want to ask about that last statement by Mr. Hanlon. I'm looking at the decision now, and I can't find where it says that 5,500 was too small. I do. My understanding of the situation then was that you had two lots back to back together comprising a little more over 10,000 square feet. One was 12 Beacon, and the other one was to be eventually become 83 Palmer. And what the board allows was to subdivide it roughly in half. And I almost get the impression from that was that it created two buildable lots from that. But perhaps I'm reading it wrong.
Mr. Chair?
Please, Mr. Revellak.
So in the in the materials for the board, there is a, you know, we have a decision. Attached to the decision is a sketch of a plot plan. And the next page contains a handwritten note which reads, to wit, to subdivide two lots, said subdivision would create two lots with less than the square foot area required by Section 14B of the zoning bylaw. So to me, that to me, that indicates, well, So to me, that read that to me, that indicates, well, if we had a copy of the zoning bylaw from nineteen fifty five, section fourteen B would give us the answer. But whoever clearly whoever wrote the whoever wrote this note and attached it to the sketch. Felt that the, you know, the the two sizes provided were less than whatever number that was.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Revellak. Mr. Seltzer, did you have further questions?
I think that gets as close to it as we can. I hadn't seen that other handwritten section. I thank Mr. Revellak for that.
Thank you, Mr. Seltzer. Mr. Valorelli, I know that the building department has just moved. From its longtime home over in Grove Street over onto Maple. The the chance of of locating the nineteen fifty five.
I tried to get it through the library.
Okay.
And I was unsuccessful, okay? COVID had something to do with it, I'm sure, but I tried a long time ago to get it through the library. And I was not able to do that.
Have you tried the town clerk's office? That's the only other place I could think of to look.
We called them as well and we didn't get any help there either. Okay, so. I'm thinking, quite frankly, as I'm listening to all of this. That and my memory is going back to the nineteen sixties. And I'm thinking that Rick Valorelli may not be wrong, okay? In terms of the then zoning for lot area being five thousand square feet. And the frontage being fifty feet. So don't quote me on that until I have something in black letter law to look at. But that would be my memory, Mr. Hanlon, okay? Just going back and searching my brain at this point as to what I remember from the nineteen sixties and the nineteen seventies.
If that were true, Mr. Anese, Mr. Chairman, if I can be allowed. Then this would become a fairly, it seems to me, at least this has become a fairly straightforward, nonconforming lot problem now. That at some point, the law would have changed and increased the minimum lot size and. And Mr. Revellak would be right that section six. Come into play and the equivalent provisions in our law.
That's correct. I agree with that. That's one of the reasons I filed for both a variance and a special permit. So I think it can be considered as Mr. Revellak is indicating alternatively. Under chapter forty A, section six. And that would deal with the lack of correct lot area or conforming lot area today.
Are there any further requests for comment from the public? Believe Mr. Mr. Seltzer, Mr. Hazelton, I think are both had opportunity to speak, whether you look to speak again. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period then. So we have so we have a board request to. Essentially reconsider the decision from nineteen fifty five. In the in a way that would allow the redevelopment of the lot by right. Which would. Not take into account the the changes in zoning that have occurred in the intervening time.
I'm asking that the board consider the alternative as well as raised by Mr. Revellak.
Yep. So if just just for argument's sake, if the board was to apply the current zoning bylaw. To this property currently, it would be it's a preexisting nonconforming. Lot. In a two family district and if. The homeowner was looking to modify. The existing home through a large addition or to renovate the home, then. It would come before if it if they were just renovating the home and they were not seeking to do a large addition, then they could do so on the existing footprint. If they were looking to enlarge the home beyond seven hundred fifty square feet, it would require a special permit finding from the zoning board of appeals. And. My, I guess my question to to the applicant is is. You know, it has said on a couple of occasions here to modi- quote modify the home. Is the intent to renovate the existing home or is the intent to replace the existing?
The intent is to construct a new DuPont. That's the intent.
So new foundation, new new everything.
Yes. I did submit, as I've indicated, I did have the architect prepare a dimensional form, which you have with the papers.
Yeah.
Okay, so that essentially shows that.
Okay, yeah, we have a we have the the proposed site plan, which is the. Those want to confirm.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I don't want to sort of jump to the chase too much, but I. I will not, I definitely will not feel comfortable moving forward on this until we've had a chance to have a thorough conversation with Mr. Heim about it. It's both important. It's legal, it's it's technical and. And and there may be a range of different possibilities that that might be. That that might lend themselves to actually making a decision that makes sense and and could conceivably respond to some of the things we've heard from the neighboring residents. So I I I think that these fish aren't ready to fry and would like to take the time to. Consult as we did with the last one with Mr. Heim and and try to consider this more carefully than we've had the opportunity to do so far.
With with that in mind, are there additional questions that you would like to raise at this time? So we have a full set of information to discuss with town council.
Again, if it's going to be discussed with the county council, I would like the alternative to be discussed as well. Chapter forty forty A, section six approach. I know I emphasized in my argument. The decision and that the decision allowed this of right, okay? But again, I did apply for both a special permit and a variance. And I think that there is a good argument with respect to chapter forty A, section six. This is only by law that amended in nineteen seventy five. And I believe I believe that's when the change occurred. I could be mistaken about that, but the change occurred with respect to lot area. Okay, the size of the lot and we we predated that, of course, for nineteen fifty five. At the time the subdivision subdivision was allowed. And I would just ask that despite the fact that. The zoning board at the time and the zoning boards at the time. Aren't as erudite as we are, okay, in terms of what they did, okay? That we don't simply push their decisions aside like it was nothing. Because when the decisions were made, people relied on whether, in fact, at the time they were wrong or not. And and that's the whole point of having a twenty day appeal period. Once that appeal period expires, okay? Generally, the closet is closed. So again, if it's presented to town council, would you please present it both ways, okay? The way I argued initially and also forty eight six.
Mr. Chairman, I don't actually disagree with any of that and think it doesn't go far enough. I I I would like to present a broad question to town council of what are the options here? There essentially many options have been presented to us and there may be ones that no one has thought of yet. And I think that we need to approach this with with an open mind and figure out. You know what the right way is for dealing with this case and it would be a mistake to try to put too narrow a question to him. He just need, I think he needs to work with us in order to explore the possibilities and guide us to exercising our judgment. As to which legal option is the most appropriate for the town and for the neighborhood and for the applicant.
I'm over to that, certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Revellak. I know you had your hand up.
Yes, I have two points. One is, the first is to concur with Mr. Hanlon. At least to make for myself to feel comfortable in making a section six finding. I'd, you know, I would need this, I would really need to see architectural drawings or at least, you know, something more than a a certified plot plan. Second, and this falls under the care case of more options, but. I suggest that Mr. Anis might wish to review the language in warrant article thirty eight. Which was adopted by town meeting last night. You know, it basically, under certain conditions. Allows the complete reconstruction of a of a dwelling on a nonconforming lot. Subject to certain energy efficiency requirements. I just present, mentioned this as an option. It's it's really brand new. But.
Haven't heard about it, Mr. Revellak, yeah?
Okay, it just just maybe something you would like to.
Thank you.
Further comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, this is not exactly a question to Mr. Heim. But there's there's been the sort of music that's been left on the dominant and the tonic note about the. About the compliance of the lot back in nineteen fifty five. I think is in the legal notice, which says that said subdivision would require two lots with less than the square foot area required by section fourteen B. Of the zoning bylaw. This was in the legal notice that went out calling for the hearing.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With that in mind. I think the board should look to continue this hearing and I think it would be prudent to. Mr. Hanlon and perhaps one other. Speak to Council Heim in the intervening time and be able to report back to the board. That the continued date. So we currently have. We have a hearing scheduled for the first, but I think that's too quick. That also coincides with eleven sixty five R. We have a date in our calendar for Tuesday, June eighth, which currently is unused. And then, but Thursday, June tenth, we do have. A hearing for Thorndike Place scheduled and that will be a considerable hearing.
I'd rather stay away from that.
Does do any members?
Do an eighth work for the board?
I was just just gonna ask that very question. Is there, is there any member of the board is unable to make Tuesday, June eighth? Seeing none, why don't we? I'll move that the. That the board continues eighty three Palmer Street, docket number three, six, five, eight. Until Tuesday, June eighth at seven thirty P M.
Sorry, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Hanlon, just before we vote, that day works fine, but would you remind me what other dates we have on the calendar real quick?
Absolutely. And I'll come back to this at the end of the hearing as well, but just for those who are in attendance, so Tuesday, June first. Is a continuance of eleven sixty five R M S A, which is the comprehensive permit hearing. And Thursday, June tenth is a continuation of Thorndike Place, which is a different comprehensive permit. Hearing. Third, and then we have, those are the only two hearings we currently have scheduled and then beyond that, we have milestone dates of Thursday, June twenty fifth. Which is currently the close of public hearing on Thorndike Place and Friday, July second, which is the close of the public hearing eleven sixty five R M S A.
So I guess my only comment would be having multiple, you know, having back to back two meetings a week is a lot. And that would put two meetings, if I read that right, one on the eighth and one on the tenth and then one on the, could you say the next one would be the twenty fifth?
So the the twenty fifth is just a, it's a milestone date, so it's the date we have to close the hearing by, but we don't have anything scheduled for that date.
I I guess my comment would be, can we not have two on every week or any week? I mean, if we have to do it under special circumstances, that's fine, but we did it last week and.
Yeah.
I I don't think the intense to wear us out.
Would would Tuesday, June fifteenth work for people?
Mr. Chairman, I can do that if we're if we're virtual, but I will be out of the. Out of the area physically during that period.
I can do it.
Okay. We would still have five members who are present today who would be available then. But I am very hopeful that you will be able to participate remotely still during that time. Mr. Anes, does that work? Date work better for you?
I'll I'll take whatever date is good for you folks.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Ford. Does that what day work for you?
It does. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. So in that case, I'll amend my motion that we continue. This hearing on eighty three Palmer Street, docket number three, six, five, eight to the. Tuesday, June fifteenth. At seven thirty P M. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Then voting, Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. Revellak.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
DuPont.
Hi.
The chair votes ayes. We are continued on. Eighty three Palmer Street. Thank you, everyone, for. For participation in this hearing. This brings us to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
The next is thirty four Marathon Street, docket number three, six, five, five. This is a continuance of a hearing from May eleventh. So we had at the previous hearing who had requested some additional information to be provided and the applicant. Was to work with Mr. Valorelli and coming up with some of those responses. So, Mr. Valorelli, if you could let us know what has transpired in the past two weeks.
I can, Mr. Chairman. So as requested, I reached out to the architect of thirty four Marathon Street. For some more finite numbers of the of the existing structure. So basically, without getting into a long spiel. They basically have a structure that contains. I'm sorry, on the second floor of that structure, it contains twelve hundred and sixty nine square feet of living space. They are asking to construct a dormer in the attic of seven feet or greater from the underside of the roof framing to the finished floor below. Of six hundred and twenty seven square feet. That in fact puts them at a forty nine percent area that is seven feet or above. And it complies to the half story definition. It's in fact forty nine percent, but it is less than half. All other factors of the house are okay. It's the typical request that the board has heard many times. There is no open space usable. It falls short of the twenty five foot minimum. Distance, so therefore even that area in the backyard does not qualify, even though there's a patch of land. That may look like it does, but in fact, I think it's twenty three by forty something. Plot plan is listed on Novus. So the long and short of it is the basement is not being used. That wouldn't qualify anyway, with the ceiling height is less than seven feet as it is. No living spaces planned for the basement. We have the first floor, second floor with twelve hundred and change square feet. They're asking to develop some living space in the attic, which is forty nine percent of the floor below. So it qualifies as a half story. I can answer any other questions. I did take the liberty of redoing the entire application. That is also posted on Novus. If the board has any questions, they can direct it to me.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Valorelli. Mr. Hanlon.
I just wanted to ask about landscaped open space because as I was reading the charts, that just says over ten percent or something like that. And I and I I'm, what I I guess I would like to know is whether we think we have enough information to conclude. What I, I guess I would like to know is whether we think we have enough information to conclude. Uh, that there won't be any. Uh, extension of the nonconformity if there, or if there is a nonconformity even about landscape open space. If you could just tell us what the status of that is, that would be great.
That is correct, Mr. Handland, so the open space does far exceed ten percent. I didn't calculate it out, but it, it far exceeds ten percent. The only, um, expansion on the existing nonconformity is the usable open space. So we're looking to expand the nonconformity, whereas it's zero. Zero to begin with, zero at the end of the day, but it is in fact increasing living space on an already nonconforming, uh, piece of land. And you, by the way, uh, you, you raise a great point because, uh, the, the zoning bylaw does not tell us to, uh, separate landscape, um, open space. Uh, and usable, especially, you don't kind of have two chunks of land, one being designated as landscape and the other one being designated as, um, usable. You can in fact, um, theoretically use your usable open space as landscape space, so not to get too crazy with this thing, but it doesn't separate it. So that being said, if one has usable open space, they have landscaped open space by default.
Further questions, Mr. Handland?
Oh, thank you.
Um, just along those lines to the, to the homeowner, are there any plans to do any, any work? Um, either with the, the driveway or any of the walkways around the house? Oh, sorry, you're on mute, sir. There we go, there we go.
No, the driveway will stay as it presently is, and there is a already pre-existing walkway that will stay as it is.
Well, the sidewalk we will probably improve upon because the cement was cracked.
Yeah.
But other than that, um, no. We're going to, you know, just do exterior improvements as far as, you know, replacing shingles and.
It's the re-siding.
The re-siding kind of thing where it needs to be and painting and improving that way, once the, we do it all at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that, because there was a question posed to me at the last hearing, so they. Yes, they have four, uh, parking spaces. They only need two.
Okay. Last call from the board before I open up for. Second round of public comment. Seeing none. So I'll go ahead and reopen this hearing for a public comment, um, as per the previous. Hearing members who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand, using the button on the participant tab in the Zoom application. If you are participating by phone, please dial star nine to indicate if you'd like to speak. You'll be called upon by myself and asked to give your name and address, given time for your questions and comments. Any public comment at this time? Seeing none, going once, going twice. We'll go ahead and close public comment for this evening. So any further discussion for the board, or are we? Does someone have, um, do we want to discuss, um? Possible conditions. On the granting of an approval? Do we have our?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Revolak?
Um, no, I, of course, I. Eager to hear from my fellow board members, but I can't think of anything in particular beyond the standard conditions.
Thank you.
It does.
So the standard three conditions, uh, which the board applies for special permits, the first one. Is that the plans and specifications provided, approved by the board, or the permit shall be the final plan since the specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington. In action with this application for zoning relief, there will be no deviation during construction for approved plans and specifications. Without the express written approval of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, number two, if the building inspector is hereby notified, he's to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time he determines that violations are present. And inspector of buildings shall proceed. Under section three point one of the zoning bylaw, under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty-one D, and institute non-criminal complaints. If necessary, the inspector of buildings may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section three point one. And number three is the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to this special permit grant. Uh, is there further discussion on this or? Any other conditions the board feels are necessary for the. Proceeding with this application? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Handland?
I move that the board approve the, uh, application for, uh, the, the Marathon Place property, Marathon Street property. Subject to the three standard, uh, conditions that were just read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Handland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Excuse me. Um, so for a vote of the board, um, Mr. Handland?
Hi.
Mills?
Hi.
Uh, and Mr. DuPont? Sorry, I couldn't hear you. Uh, thank you.
Hi.
And in the absence of Mr. O'Work, um, Mr. Ford?
Hi.
And the chair, but, uh. The, that motion is approved, so, um. The, so the board is issuing a, a preliminary approval on this, um, pending the approval of the written decision. And our neck, that should be, hopefully be. Voted on at our next scheduled hearing, which would be, uh, next Tuesday, June first. Mr. Handland, is that out there?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll, I've already written half of it and I'll write the other half and we'll have it by then.
Perfect. We are, we are approved, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate all your time and efforts.
No, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Um, if you have any, any further questions, Mr. Valarelli is.
He's a man.
Thank you, Mr. Valarelli. Very welcome.
Alright, thank you.
You. So, uh, just to quickly for, uh, the board and for any members of the public who are. Interested in following along, there are upcoming meetings, um, that are scheduled, uh, so Tuesday, June first. At seven thirty P M, it's the continuance of eleven sixty-five R. Massachusetts Avenue. Uh, Thursday, June tenth, is the continuance of Thorndike Place. And now Tuesday, June fifteenth, is, excuse me, the continuance of eighty-three Palmer Street. And then beyond those, um, meeting dates, we have two milestone dates, um, Thursday, June. My fifth is the close of the public hearing for Thorndike Place, actually, pardon me, that is a Friday. Friday, June twenty-fifth, is the close of the public hearing for Thorndike Place, and Friday, July second, is the close of the public hearing eleven sixty-five R. Massachusetts Avenue. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoned Board of Appeals. I appreciate everyone's participation and patience throughout the meeting, especially wish to thank, uh, Rick Valarelli and Vincent Lee for all their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording this meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of the proceedings, for understanding the recordings made by ACMI will be available on demanded acmi.tv. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town. arlington dot m a dot U S. That email address is also listed on the ZBA website. Um, and so to conclude tonight's meeting, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, before I move to adjourn, I'd like, if, if it is okay, I'd like to especially underline. The contribution that Mr. Valarelli has made to help, uh, the McGoverns through some of the arcane aspects of, of our process. We've tried to become as user-friendly and an agency as, as we can, and we have somewhat talmudic, uh. A document to, to deal with, and, uh, Mr. Mr. Valarelli really kind of has gone beyond the. Normal scope of duty, just, just to be helpful, and I would like to express my, and I think our appreciation to him for doing that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Handland, and all the guys have as well.
As do.
Thank you, Mr. Valarelli.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
So, thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed. Seeing none, the board is adjourned. Thank you also very much.